Kind of both sides a little bit, but probably a little stronger to not get rid of them as well. Simply because, and I hope I'm not still in there as thunder, but they really feel that they're using those cell phones as a connection piece. If there's an emergency or something to that fact, and if we do have a policy, that would take away from them as well. So at this point, we're kind of learning that saying, we at least explored it, we're going to do it alone. Or if you get a site run before that's going to ultimately reach your trust, you can make the policy.
My question is, we kind of altered the policy at the start of this year, how it was before. And just some of the survey results, it mentioned things in there about uniform application. So it's, I guess, my memory from our current policies, when a student is in class, the cell phone is not to be called. Is that correct?
And there was never really a policy, it was just in the handbook as a rule, what was expected of them. And they did alter that a little bit, if I remember correctly, I was coming in as that was being changed. But they, they changed that a little bit, so I would probably ask that they explain what those changes were and what you're asking.
And how is it, I mean, is that the correct, is that, is my understanding correct? So what we changed was more-
If you're going to speak, wait, please come to the podium. Thank you.
So the main change we made with the handbook was putting a procedure in place of what happens in the first fence, second fence, and the third defense. So there's kind of structure, there's, that was the overarching structure. What I give my staff is, I want you to create a system, procedure in your classroom that fits your kids for the day, for the class, or for the eighth group. And so some students might have their desks or tables, whatever they're using, the phones have to be on the desk based on. Others say they have to be in backpack, others collect them in a box. So I give that to the staff and say, as long as you have a procedure, you follow it, I don't have to do that. And that's been followed pretty well. When phones come in, I collect them. First offense, the kids pick them up at the end of the day. Second time, I call the parents, they come in, and if we have a third offense, then they're on the matrix, and maybe they're serving the detention. So that's been effective. So there's uniformly, as far as the policy saying the cell phones have to be used in the classroom unless there's a really rare circumstance to need to. With everybody having a computer, there's not a whole lot of instances that does happen, but there are things where kids need to take quick pictures and it's easier to upload or share that way. That's fine, but as far as just having them out to socialize or be on their phones, that's what we're not supposed to be doing. So that's the overarching part of the handbook that we changed, is to give a procedure of what happens when they're out. What can the teacher expect? Who does a phone go to? What happens on this offense? As far as a, everybody has to turn them into a box or a table. I give that to the staff, say, if you run your classrooms and if we have issues, then I'll step in and help you, figure out procedures. But from last year to this year, it was a big improvement, big improvement. I would say that you guys walked through the classroom, did you sign, you didn't see phones, but you saw the phones. I think it was kind of used on the desk, that's for procedure, so there's different backpacks, so.
So have there been any issues as far as, or is it, is it, are they isolated things, or is it something where it's just a major?
It's not a major issue. I think this, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the survey came up from what Stanley was doing out West and put in the no cellphone. And so we were just testing waters to see what our fault upon it, but no, I don't, I don't have a burning fire of cell phones, not abiding by our policy, but that's all.
That was my initial question. Is this a burning issue that we need to be on this, or is this just kind of a general?
I think this was just us reaching out to see what the feedback was. Oh, this, I don't think this is trying to be reactive to something that's happening. I think us putting those procedures in place for the handbook is help, that's just enforcing. And if I do have an issue, that's usually with the teacher's classroom admin, and that's my, as far as everybody's a whole, no, we don't have a burning issue, it's not cell phones. It was kind of too old. There was one when I came in July, that was a topic that was discussed a little bit. And it came back after Stanley had their implemented. So that's why I read it, I just asked him to put the survey together, so we would have results for you guys. And the public would know too at that point, so that no, there wasn't some troubles.
I thought it was interesting reading the kids' comments, you know, I use it for school, you know, it provides you a device for schoolwork. So that's, you know, that's baloney. But, you know, you're always going to have those kids that aren't going to follow the rules. That's just what it's going to be, but I don't think it either in the school, but that's fine. But also if you're going to have cell phones, are you going to think it's smart hatches? I don't, I know, it just keeps going where there's just a way. Keep tweaking our existing goals. I would say that most kids are better than I am at keeping your phones on silent.
But even on silent, it's a vibration.
But, but not even on vibrate, but just silence, not vibrating. And I, I mean, when I, when I'm out and public speaking with adults, I hear lots of smartphones going off than I do when I'm in a scripture.
On the table, I mean, I think if the kids have them and they're in their pocket, they're not using it in class. I mean, apparently I do send my kids messages occasionally, like, you know, don't want it ringing, but I'm fine with it. But answer, yeah, not, not, but, you know, I don't want all of the people like they got to have now, if they could check it up after class or at lunch.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm not hearing any, any desire to make a major policy change here, but we'll continue to leave, leave the, the policies in places we have in the handbook. Continue to monitor throughout the school year and, and look for any recommended changes from our principals or administrators for the next year. All right. No action then on that item. All right, the first reading of the 2223 calendar, there were three of them. Which, are, are we to, to choose one of these as our first reading?
Yeah, I can kind of go a little bit over those, the, the three different calendars. The first one is more or less just taking this year's and plugging in the exact same dates. Obviously, the one change that did have to happen was the November 11th ended up being on a different date. And that's a required date, so we can't alter that. But I tried to match it up with where they fell in the calendar this year and matched it to this version one. So that, that one's similar to what we have now. The one thing that did change is we're looking at, we keep hearing our teachers are not having time to work. They're not having enough PD time to be able to accomplish what we're trying to get it, get taken care of. So we're always looking to either pay them extra or do something to that fact. So that's why we looked at moving to a full day PD, so it gives them some actual work time. After we train them on something, they actually have time to actually go and actually work on it, instead of us now having to pay extra for them to go and do that. And so it's helping to offset some of those costs, it's not going to offset all of it, but it would offset a, a bigger portion of that. They would actually have time to do that, instead of having to do that outside of the school hours that they did pay for. So that would be the only big change with version one, is it be full day PDs instead of half days. Version two, I'm not going to go through all the changes, but I did list those in the report. So version two makes, mostly what that does is it moves it to, oh, the other thing with version one is it doesn't always match up with the center. So it counter, counter dicks with what we're trying to accomplish is when we're off, they're off, they're off, we're off. Concept, so that we're not trying to find where all those kids are going to have to go when the center is out, a school is not having school. And we have school, we now still have to find a place for all those kids to go. So version two and three actually helps us in that aspect, is that the days that the center is off, we actually have off the school as well. So that was the big change with version two and, and three. The version three came from, version three, version two, as a request to see if there was a way where graduation would not have to take place on Memorial Day. So that's where version three comes in, version three is, is we would graduate the week before Memorial Weekend. So that way you'd have that whole weekend off on set.
So, oh, you went and started with that?
Nope. Basically, what it does is it's moved some days around and shifted things to where, let's see, there's a couple of days that were added as a PD. Instead of having different days off, if that makes sense. So looking through it, like August 19th, we added a PD day in there. February 17th becomes a parent teacher comp day. That gets moved to December 23rd instead of actually being a day off. That makes sense. So it added a PD day there. And then, if I remember correctly, on the February 16th, that was a day off for something different, but it moves it to February 7th. So basically, it's basically shifting things around within the calendar so that you can still have those days. As far as student contact days, those are going to be listed at the bottom. I think calendar version three, if I remember correctly, has one less student contact day. And because we created it as a PD day instead, and we did everything outside of trying to maneuver around with using these personalized learning, or excuse me, professional development days, and also PT comp days, shifting those around to make them work better. We did do a poll of the staff, just so you guys are aware, version one had three votes, there was 27 overall. Version one had three votes, version two had nine votes, version three had 14 votes, and one person said go back to the drawing board.
I know you mentioned competency.
It's not finalized, and that's, that's why I would say don't approve a calendar at this point, just in case they make any changes. But those were what was told to me is, is going to be, I had received a copy of. Yeah. I know a couple of big things is that, well, the biggest one that I could see that they were looking at, and I think it was from school reports, is on, on the year opening weekend, they moved that to the Thursday, following Thursday. That was probably the biggest thing, shocked me a little bit, but. Yes.
Getting out earlier. Well, just, it's not, it's not, that side was even the hardest side. It's just the summer activity, you know, they're starting practices August 5th, and, you know, things like that just seems to be really, and definitely no one, you think there's a. In the spring, I mean, if, if we feel it, we can still provide the content to our students. One must be as good as if we're still getting everything done.
And understand that by doing that, that version three, if you look at our last day, it's actually now on a Friday versus like Wednesday and before. So that, those two days just got bumped as far as the personal, I keep saying personal learning, that's what we're calling professional learning. Those two days got moved to that follow, so.
Right. So are we considering that looking at all three of these calendars as our first reading? Or are we to select one of them as our first?
I would say select one, and then we can make adjustments on that as according to what you get from us. If possible, if you don't want to do that.
So the target staff was. And we, we're not sure how that quite lines up with the current tech center calendar that we're, is that more aligned to what we think?
According to what was last presented to the schools, the superintendents, I think, this should align to it, but I don't know if there's any changes after that. I've asked for a copy of the calendar.
All right, is there a motion regarding the calendar? Thorpe moves to adopt version three as a first reading of the 2223 calendar. Is there a second? Rosendahl second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. Facilities assessments.
I'm going to try and explain this to this at the end, but what I did here is, we were looking at, obviously, the windows and that science floor. And then with S R funds, we were going to try and explore the HVAC in the high school. What happened with now having a second emergency with plumbing and knowing that our plumbing or our pipes on the building have some age to them? I've asked the engineer and architect to go back and just kind of put together, what would it actually cost for us to be able to put together a facilities plan? And the reason for that is because if we're going to do these big projects, we should know, is there anything else that we're really trying to cover? And make sure that our building is here to stay. I, I've heard when I came that we should be looking at a new school, but then as I explored it, we have a lot more people that want to stay in the school that we're already at. And the reason for that facilities, to create like this facility assessment would be sort of you as a board and myself can create. And with April, we can create a plan that's a five-year, a 10-year plan to organize what is a priority so that we don't lose this school. If we want to have the building stay for another hundred years, we got to make sure that we're doing the proper maintenance and the proper fixes to that. After we had our meeting, we found out that, actually was going right into it, that there was an assessment done seven years ago. And we don't know exactly where that is, so we would like to explore that some more. But at the same time, we don't discuss the, the fact that, and jumping any time here, guys, that we would like to make sure that the board is on board, is that we're pursuing this movement forward. If we're going to create this plan, we have to actually stick to this plan. We can't just say, oh, we're going to go and do this assessment and then spend a bunch of money to have this assessment done, and then not do the work out. That, that's the whole thing, that we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. If, if this assessment is to move forward, we've got to continue with the plans that are building. If that makes sense, did I miss anything on that? The other two gentlemen are in here, and it was kind of going up.
No, that, that's just the, when I seen or saw the bid was fairly high, I thought this for the assessment, it's like, well, we got to be serious. We're just spending this money, is this something that we could spend money on? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm just a little scared of what they might say on some of the things. And what we're going to do, and how we're going to go about doing that after, so just wanted to get that out before we.
And I think that brings up another really good point, is that if we have a number of things that come back and says, we need to get this done sooner rather than later. Like the next year or two years, and we've, we've got to really move forward with this, and it becomes a really big thinking item. We don't probably have the funds for that, so this could potentially also create where we need to maybe look at a bond. So just be aware that that's a, a fear that I think everybody has, but at the same time, we also, we don't want to lose our school. And I think that's a bigger fear, having to build a new school on the bond that's going to fall with that way higher.
Yeah, just so there's no more surprises, these 30,000 more surprises, we had two already, and missed that, and laid out soon. Or at least the foreseeable things we could see if other things sun rise, so.
So have we located the, the plan or the, the assessment that was done seven years ago?
We did, it was like the day before the facilities meeting, they finally, we finally did it. It was like, it was at three o'clock or four, like right around, it was the afternoon before. So we really didn't have much time. Or four, like right around, it was the afternoon before, so we really didn't have much time. Um, I know April and they were trying to explore that and say, okay, if we do this, we not do that. So that, that's kind of why we held off on moving forward with making some kind of a recommendation, uh, but we wanted to make sure we still drive it forward. So that everybody has understanding, I would like to hear it, that it's not that we're trying to waste money, we're trying to make sure that we save this school.
Okay, so is there some action needed on this or we're just?
I, I don't think so, I think it was more so just sort of waiting on the same page.
All right. You're not thinking a lot of that corner. So kind of trying to drag this out because we don't want to have a meeting that lasts less than an hour. We did it, wasn't it just last month? All right, so no, uh, no action needed on the facilities assessment, but we'll look forward to hearing more about, um. The, the one in the past and what, and we may have to make a decision to do additional work. Okay, so let's move on to policy, um, there are. Four policies we recommend for a first reading today. And. Five. Oh, where's that come from? Oh, that, no, that was our agenda, that was our.
Oh, you didn't?
Yep, yep, because we had that tip. We had it, but it was A V B, which is now incorporated into that one. We didn't have A V D C, which was requested as a, one that we never adopted, that, uh. Our Coastal School Board Association wanted us to recent, but ours was A V B, which was now. A V B and A V D C, fine. I'm just looking on the agenda that was in the packet and that wasn't there, so.
I must have copied it.
Okay, so, um. Uh, okay, so first, um, skipping to, to letter B, did anyone see any of those that were recommending for no second reading? That you think there should be a second reading, keeping in mind that three of them are board regulations and don't require a second reading, so. F F G and F G, does anyone, did anyone pay attention to have a second reading? All right, so let's back up then on, uh, item A for first readings, we have A V V B, which is community use of district. Property. Of. F E E, student organizations, F F K suspension and expulsion, F G A, student education records and privacy. These are in your packet and we're. Recommending them, um. To prove a first reading today. There's a couple highlighted areas in some of them, there, they have two options. And I believe that you said district property, um, we've always kind of just went with option two. Right. Um, I, I've always given this school property as. Available to the community, we ask for community support and when it doesn't interfere with our activities and programming, uh, if our facilities can be useful. That's been our philosophy, so I would, I suggest that we choose option two there. Everyone, this is very. Yeah. Um, on page two of that policy. There's an option one that, um, the. Organization should provide proof of insurance or they should agree to pay all damages resulting from. Your rental or use. This is a much expanded policy from what it had been declared, yeah, almost. And I know, um, being named as additional insurance does take time with some insurance company. So I think if you do option two, they can always go back and, if, you know, request. See the process, less paperwork.
And our policy does cover, like, if there were to borrow or to use the buses, that's covered under our policy. It's mine, it's one of our drugs.
Right. All right, so, uh, we're, we're leaning here towards, um, option two. All right. There are quite a few, this, as I said, is a much expanded from previous and. Quite a few years ago, I think it was back when Mr. Johnson was here, we, he and probably Tom developed a facility use agreement and. We had been using it and it's sort of, I think it's sort of disappeared for a while and I don't know if it's, if we are continuing, if it has been. Re, reborn and we're, we're using it now again, um, I did notice in here. That it says, uh, that this policy says item four under limitations, when advertising or promoting activities held on our property. The outside groups shall clearly communicate that the activities are not being sponsored by the district and so. Something like that should be added, if, if we adopt this in this form, something like that needs to be added to that so that they know that. I'm thinking of the Grace Luther and youth having the carnival, you know, in winter. They want to promote it, of course, but they probably wouldn't think to do that unless they had that reminder in the agreement. The other item I noticed here is that. Um, prohibited activities includes, uh, possession of weapons and I know we've discussed before when hunter safety. Is there's, I think there's a policy somewhere that extends them from having, because they have to have guns when they're doing the hunter safety training. So I'm not sure if, if that exemption would tie back to this policy or perhaps clear language should. Be included in this policy that allows for the use of guns for hunter safety training. And it does say B schedule, um. Which I don't know if we've ever. Uh, so it says the superintendent shall establish and submit to the board for approval. If we don't want that, we don't expect that, then perhaps we should remove it from the policy. We need to. So yeah, there must be adventure, yeah. Uh, back to the, uh. Form for request to use facility, they, they can revise again. Over, so we have people written open gen or whatever, whoever contacts school. To start opening them, the ones who sign up on ring are ultimately responsible for that. What are your thoughts about the B schedule? I don't think it's necessary, but it's a big, usually. I don't think it's ever charged.
But the piece that I've seen. It's more of a security deposit.
Right. Or reimbursement for a janitor, for a janitor, but. Um, so if we don't want that, then I think we should remove it from, from the policy, so. All right, um, that enough on that one? So student organizations. It's a supplementary policy, we, we just worked them.
Yeah, when they added homeschool.
Oh, yeah, that was.
Good question here between one reading or two, was that paragraph not curriculum related?
Yeah. Oh, right, I made a note on this. Um. It says that, it, that we re, we require. A staff member to attend every. Evangel or a meeting of this non-curricular related organization, why would we require a staff member? Attend something that's not ours. I mean, we would, we would expect a responsible adult from that. Student-led organization, but I don't know why we would expect one of our staff. So should we change the language or delete it or?
I think that's optional, someone's like that, so it's just optional, might wish to be able to.
I get it, so.
So, uh, we're proposing to strike that bracketed. Underlined, uh. Paragraph from the policy. Or machine, and so really the only changes are to add. Homeschool students. And the way. Students. All right, so suspension and expulsion. Anybody see any changes that need to be made there? If not, we'll move on to F G A. Which we've just reviewed. Two months ago. And this, this. So what are we proposing to change? Who is what they have added. And they deleted. Degrees honor. But they're proposing to add that to. What, what was our policies, we had this conversation and we didn't necessarily approve it in the same way that it was recommended by the school association, right? The big discussion we've had is the name with the photos. This is what we currently, um, approved. Okay, and so again, what, move the little window up so we could see here something that. So the. The items that are. Numeral, that are enumerated by the letters A through H are items that. We can reveal, our policy says we can share those. Yep, this is what we have currently. And then this is what they're proposing. So it's more student information would be let out in a directory.
We want to have.
And, and, and it. They're, they're bracketed, so they're saying, yeah, you can or you don't have to, yes, so. So we have already chosen not to, so it legally allowed for them to be, I mean, included, but you don't have to do that. All right, and we have as letter E, name, first and last.
And I think that was just how it all.
Where, where, that, they don't even have that, oh, oh, I see, because I, okay, there we, we just don't have.
So the one in blue are the amendments and changes that the school board association came out with. And then the one in white is what we currently have.
Okay, so my thoughts are we shouldn't change anything that we have A through H, we shouldn't add anything. Okay, so then, so then if we look at the rest of the policy. There are. A couple of other relatively minor changes.
Yep.
And it's the addition of a four. And eligible. On page four. Quite a bit of additional language, uh, and I highlighted their building level privacy officer. Who's that or the help of those that. There anything concerning in these two paragraphs? Page four. No concerns? So we're gonna, we're going to propose to leave our, our, our list of. Personal information, directory information, same. Um, but all other proposed changes we propose to accept. Where we are with this. All right, so those are the one, two, three, four policies that we propose for first reading. And we made a few changes in the first one and the last one. All right, so is there a motion to approve as a first reading those four policies? As we've discussed. Fine, but moves to approve the first reading of those four policies, is there a second? Or second, is there any discussion? Any questions about, uh, how we've. How we're approving these or any additional discussion? Hearing none, um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no, motion passes. And we have two policies and three regulations that we propose for, uh. To waive the first reading and, uh, final approval today. And that was student assemblies. Student rights and responsibilities. A regulation related to suspension and expulsion. And student education records. Related to the student education records and privacy. Any questions on those before we entertain a motion for, to waive the first reading and final approval? What was that? I didn't. Okay, is there a motion, uh, to adopt as, uh, to waive the first reading of the policies? Uh, and adopt these two policies and three regulations as the, uh. Final approval. Make all moves, is there a second?
A second.
Rosendall seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Is there any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no, motion passes and we'll move on to. The minutes and financial reports, the minutes of the November ninth meeting. The minutes and financial reports. The minutes of the November ninth meeting were in your packet. Is there? Additions or changes versus to a. Did you cancel yourself? Alright, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Rosendahl votes to approve the minutes of the November ninth meeting. Is there a second? Time but seconds. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. The financial reports, we have the reconciliation, the balance sheet and the revenue and expense reports. We've all made notes on. Quite a few places. Are there any questions about anything? In addition, there's something I keep forgetting to report. So when I first started, we had those healthy stat machines. And it was kind of like a loan they were purchased by. You know, then the teachers that I think one week, when we got listening, it was kind of then managing. I don't remember the whole story. But it was a great, I'm the school had purchased them and that all the revenue, the profits go back to pay, come back and we've had it be years, years and years. Because I believe the prices were something else in the whole of them. Just, you know, at the beginning of this year, they started making money. They paid off the debts and they are maybe quite a few, quite a lot of extra money right there. They need the USDA, sorry, also, yeah, some of the stuff I question too, but as long as they meet the guidelines or whatever, they just. Or whatever, just if they meet those guidelines, they can be put in there. So that was good news, I guess. You know, we thought it'd be like 10 years before they'd ever seen the profit. But nothing being made during the summer. And COVID, yeah, yeah, so that was one good thing to report. She can't keep my crustables hot in there. So it's very weird because they don't like their crustable panel for lunch, but we have a hard time.
Because they're not a lunch.
Period.
I think she's had it this year for lunch though.
Oh, but yeah, so I don't, yeah, so it's. Alright, any other questions on the reconciliation, the balance sheets and the revenue and expense reports?
There's another thing is that with this last legislation, there was a bill passed that. It's $88, so there is a, that comes from the state, has to go back to the state to the update their stars, their starts data. I don't know if you remember that or not, but that's going to come out in, in January. So just be aware, it's about 44,000, I think it was. I don't think you've seen that much less revenue coming in. So just be aware of that. Forty-four one seventy-six.
That's $88 per student, so eighty-eight times about five of its students.
An old one, I'm just getting her, that's the new one, just got voted in. It was just voted in. I don't, the way I understood it, it's a one time.
A one time deal.
It's a one time deal because there are stars that we do, like our superintendents report on stars. Different than the star's task, it's actual star's system that the government, the state uses. So we report everything into that, but there's so many things that are duplicated and we're reporting multiple areas with the exact same information. So we've asked numerous times, they have this same, this system updated and given it, so it's a little more user friendly. And now that's, that's how they pay that. Basically they're saying, take money out of the students, if you're educating them, put it back.
So they're, they're just cleaning up the.
I think there's some changes.
Database.
I couldn't tell you exactly if there's anything on it. It's been needed for quite some time. I know a lot of stuff that doesn't. Doesn't communicate real well with like college school and some others that it's supposed to be connected with. There's a lot of things, there's a struggle with stars that creates troubles for college. It's, the whole system is based around this.
So it needs to be done and we all get to pay for it.
You got your wish.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the reconciliation, balance sheet and the revenue and expense reports as presented? Nagel moves to approve those three financial reports. Is there a second? For seconds, any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. And the bills are starting on page seventy-eight of our packet and none, none came late this. Meeting is a little bit later in the month. Is there a motion to approve the invoices? Which were in your. Time button moves to approve. Is there a second? Nagel, seconds. Now, is there any discussion? Anything that's. Anybody wants to highlight a couple of big payments to the. Southeast region for a tech center for third quarter assessment and summer edge. So we paid them so much for a senior because we received a foundation aid for it. Right, any more questions or discussion on the bills? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Before we get to the future meeting date, I have one. I think I got this last, last month, just before the meeting, but. From the NRT School Business Managers Association. April received a bronze award in the certificate of merit, bronze award of completing a hundred training and experience points in education as a school business manager. For the old school district and that was presented during the. School, it was a junction with the school boards convention in May, October. So congratulations and thank you for your continued professional growth. With that, you know, April, we're not required to evaluate her by law as we are with our superintendent. But we think it's a good practice. And so what I'm, what I propose is that we will distribute both on paper and electronically, however. Whichever you prefer, the evaluation form was created a couple of years ago and I'll have you turn them all in to me and. I will compile them and review them privately with April. Hope that we can get that done here before the end of December and. If we have, did you have paper copies ready or? Alright, so if you want, if you want a printed copy, please let April know before you leave and you can take it with you, otherwise we'll send it out. Okay, with that, is there anything else for the bit of the order? You haven't heard January, seven AM. Hearing none, I'll declare the meeting adjourned at, well, I have seven fifty-eight on my. And I think we started at six fifty-eight. Meeting adjourned.